We need to order. We also have a special council meeting tonight. We're going to try to work these together, kind of blend them in a little bit. We also, for some scheduling issues, we're going to raise, move the finance committee to the front. And so at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hasky to handle his committee. We're going to take number seven. We'll do that one, Justin, if that's okay. We'll pull it out in the special council meeting and talk about since this is both areas. So you'll just take items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, and then we'll come back to seven. You're on mute still.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number eight on the agenda is the self-contained breeding apparatus replacement. Chief Isabel provided a staff report in the agenda to consider financing the purchase of replacement self-contained breeding apparatus with the Hillman Capital Corporation. This item is a budget replacement of the fire department SCBA equipment. The current equipment is at the end of its life with many components expiring in March of 2022. The current equipment is 15 years old and non-serviceable. The annual payment for purchase cost not to exceed $44,000. Chief, don't know if you're there in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Might be a fan on that. There was a couple of other things I think maybe you wanted to discuss pairing this with as well?
That's correct. Mayor, council, Chairman, Hasky. The SCBA replacement request or the financing for tonight is just for the replacement of our normal SCBA that we use on fires and hazmat and any confined space where we would have to breathe off the tanks. It is an end of life, and this was budgeted this year. We, as we prepared to bring the financing forward, really in the eleventh hour, there was some realization that we are also preparing a cardiac monitor, the 12-lead monitor replacement this year as well. And there is some financial benefits to pairing that financing together, specifically in the interest rate and the term. And we can do that and save a considerable amount of money over the term of that financing. And so we were, we were looking for approval to take the SCBA financing forward, but also consideration of pairing that with, the option to pair that with the cardiac monitor financing as we go forward to council.
Commit, or does he, Isabel, on this, on this item?
Chief, on the, on the, on the SCBA equipment, I know we, we bought new bottles just a couple of years ago, and I think we're, the old ones we had were, we were going to be out of compliance or something. What are your plans with those bottles that are just a couple of years old?
So the, the bottles are today's SCBA components. All the manufacturers are going to a, it's a universal connection and fitting. Some of them could be used, some of them can be sold in or traded in. We have a large number of those bottles that are just need to go to the trash. They cannot be reused for any airfields going forward.
Okay, thank you.
What was the total, what was the total cost of the cardiac? For the, the 12-lead cardiac monitors, we budgeted 105.
Was that the total expense with the financing charge of the 105?
Monica, help me out here.
The total expense was 105. The financing piece of it would take our payments from 43,879.26 to 60,470.81. What we looked at was doing the cardiac monitors, we would consider their useful life seven years instead of the 10 with the SCBA because they're a little bit smaller type of equipment. And so we, we got with our financing company and checked. And so what they're doing is the first seven payments would be 60,470.81, which would be for both the SCBAs and the heart monitors. And then the last three payments would just be the 43,879.26, which would just be for the SCBAs.
And if you remember, any, what was the total budgeted financing expense on our basis for this that was put into the book?
We had over 66,000 budgeted in, in annual payments for it.
For the two combined?
For the two of them, yes.
And this would put it with 60,470.81, is that correct?
That would be correct if you chose the option to do both.
What's the pleasure of the committee?
Chair, I make the motion that we forward counsel a recommendation to approve the joint financing for both as presented.
Second.
I vote to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. So I'll go to council with positive recommendation. Item number nine, the test main street manager position. Mr. Barnes, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Let me pull up my staff report. I'll wing it. As you're aware, we were selected to be a, the only Main Street city joining the Main Street program in January of 2021. We hired a Main Street manager who has recently left. We also brought on, for a very short period, Terry Colley, who was the assist, the former, who is the former Assistant Executive Director of the Texas Historic Commission. And during his time, I requested Mr. Colley to take a look at our, at our program and make recommendations to improve it. In talking with him, the last time I spoke with him, he advised me that he, he would recommend changing our pay level from the approximate $38,000, it was 37 and change. Anyway, he suggested that we raise it to between 50 and 52, I'm sorry, 52 and $55,000 as a starting salary. I requested the salaries of the Main Street managers in cities about our size. That showed that, that populations ranged between 20,0070 and 28,851. The average population was 24,376. The salaries ranged from 45,300 to 69,000 with the average being 57,579. The average experience, or I'm sorry, the experience range from .35 years to 35 years with an average of 6.9 years. The only salary in the salary survey that Mr. Thurman has been working on, his mineral wells and their salary range is 60,000 to 88,668. Mr. Colley recommended the 52 to 55,000 dollar range because he felt what we, like what we could do is get either somebody with some experience from a smaller program or somebody that's been with a program our size for a period of time that was trying to take a step up and, and that it would get us someone with experience. Ran the, the financials today. Currently, we have 48,397 budgeted for the cost of this position, that salary, insurance, the whole should manage. At 55,000, the total cost would be 72,128. And the total fiscal impact would be 23,731. And again, that includes some benefits such as the one-time adjustment, one-time salary adjustment and the 1% additional retirement. And with that, the alternatives that, that we have found is the committee can advance that to full council. They can advance it with a negative recommendation, or they can take no action. Staff respectfully recommends the approval of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Barnes?
Alan, what attempts to be made to try to fill out position full-time since the previous employee?
At this, at this time, there has been none because we have been in the process of reviewing not only our job description, but job descriptions from the other Main Street cities and cities outside. Based on the outcome of this, this meeting tonight, I anticipate the announcement of the position to go out early initially.
What do you think timeline on a hire date would be? I don't want to rush it, but I mean.
We'll probably see where we are about two weeks in to see how many applications that we have. If, if we have quality ad, applications, at that time, we'll begin interviews. If not, we'll wait another week or 10 days and take a look at what we have.
I'll make a, a motion that we recommend the full council, the salary range for this position would be the 52 to 55 as presented.
I have a motion to a second.
Second for discussion?
Thank you. I'm looking for something here, sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the matter?
I was looking for something here, Justin, if you'll give me just a minute.
Okay. While, while he's looking that up, I did think that question, Alan, as far as the discussion, so the recommendation as far as the salary, weren't there any other recommendations that the interim Main Street person made as it relates to the description or responsibilities?
No, sir. He, he did recommend that, that we review the other job descriptions as were provided by, by THC and to incorporate what we felt like would be a, a good fit for our community. There are other, there, there are other recommendations, however, I have not seen those yet as our parts director has them and she's been quarantined with COVID for the past week, week and a half.
What did you say the average was?
According to THC, the average salary is 57,579.
Sir, is our interim, interim manager already gone?
Yes, sir. He, he was a, he is a bi-vocational minister, pastor at a church in, in Fort Worth, and he advised that his time constraints, that, that this job did not fit into his
Finally found what I'm looking for, sorry.
You found what you're looking for?
Yeah, give me just one second. I had a few, a few others besides mineral wells on that page. You may be that, I know initially we had two different ones, so.
Okay, the, the copy I've got only has mineral.
Yeah. So that average was 47 to 62. I guess my concern with that is we've got, we've got some very similar positions that are not that high.
That would be my, that would be my question to Personnel Chairman. If we've done a salary study, we've came up with these ranges. We haven't gone back out to try to fill this. Granted, I think maybe the caliber or what we want, it's going to be hard to get anybody that's $38,000. I've got several positions that are hard to fill that are in that range. But I, I just, what does this do to our, to our salary studies that we've done? And I don't know. That'd be my only concern.
Well, and I don't think we ever did a salary survey on, we haven't done one since that position was created, so.
Well, I'll tell you, I just think it's imperative we get somebody with some experience at this time in the position. I don't feel like that we're in a situation at this point with a program to hire somebody to train on the job. I think the only way we're going to pay for it. If we really want the program to succeed and it needs to desperately succeed if we want to see some changes downtown, that's the only reason why we commit the resources to start the program. I'm not saying that there's not good young candidates that maybe don't have experience that could do it, but I don't think that's what we need at this point if this is finished.
And I agree, we need, we need, the, the experience would definitely help with the position because I feel like through whatever, it's been very rudderless for that position. And for what have we gotten, for what we've paid, I don't, you know, I know there's work been done. I'm not here to blame anybody for any of it. But if, if that's what we think will take us to the next level, somebody that's got that experience and that's what it's going to take, then I'd be for it. But like we've talked about with the planner position or that, I don't want to raise the position and then bring in somebody that doesn't have this, that experience.
No, sir, I don't.
Does, does that make sense? I mean, absolutely.
That'd be really disappointing for me. I, I would not be surprised if you come back and tell me that we still can't in that range get the qualified candidates. That would not shock me. I mean, if that'd be the response versus, yeah, we're going to hire this person, we, we like him or her, and yet she, or he has no experience. That would be very disappointing.
Is there any impact? I know that there have been some ripple effects of pay increases in the past. What would this have? What impact would this pay increase have as it relates to the pay scale that you currently?
I really can't give a definitive answer because I don't know what's going to happen in the future. The only similar position that, that we have is our tourism director or our tourism manager. And she makes a little bit above the 55, I don't know if it's 57 or 58, something like that. She's going just a little bit over. So somewhere, she's, she's somewhere in that, that cost range. That's really the only comparable position that I can think of.
All right. Any other discussion on that?
All right, it would, can I, I'm sorry, will you clarify what the motion, what, what, how, what was that motion exactly?
I think the motion I made was to recommend the full council approval of adjusting the salary range of the position to 52, 55 as represented.
So 52 is a minimum and 55 is a maximum?
That was how the motion was stated.
The 55, when we hire somebody with a certain number of years' experience, up to five years, I think it is, or 10 years, we can increase that salary up to 10%, and that's what the 55 is, is the, is approximately 10% higher than the 52. Unless you made it to the top, then it would be the top.
Well, we're fixed to adjust all of this. I'm fine with the ju, you know, we've got to fix the problem. I've just.
Right. And, and that's the reason I say if, if you want to make the range 52 to 55 and we'll decide what happens in the, with the salary survey, that's fine. I just got to, I have a responsibility to get somebody in that position and I've got to have a motivated self-starter. I, I do too. Have, have a motivated self-starter.
Feed that dog.
What about 45? I need somebody, I need somebody with, with experience in this position.
Okay, I, if I can offer, I guess make a motion to amend the, the minimum at 47 with a maximum of 55.
Second.
So we've got an amendment. The motion is recommending counsel minimum 47, maximum pay of 55. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same side. All right. Motion will go to recommendation.
You got to vote on the original motion now. That was just the amendment.
That was just the amendment. So now we're.
Got to go back to their actual original amendment, which is now modified or amended to. The motion was the 52 to 55, and it was modified, and then we've approved that. Now we've got to go back and approve the actual motion. Sorry.
So any other original motion? Here are none. All those in favor of the original motion, 52 to 55, please say aye.
Aye.
As amended to 47 to 55.
47 to 55.
As amended to 47.
Yep.
Aye.
And opposed, same side. There we go. Okay. So that'll go to council with positive recommendation. Item number 10, discussed request for proposal of depository services. Monique provided support recommending accepting the First Financial Bank proposal for depository service and presenting to council for approval on 51st, this could be for two years with one two-year extension, provided both parties agreed to the extension. Maybe a few bars here in just a second. Apologize. Request for proposals for depository services were advertised on November the 10th, 2021, and November 17, 2021. City received the proposals from Texas Bank and First Financial. Staff reviewed and evaluated those proposals. There was a comparison provided. And let's see, one of the items noted additional, additional three hours for ACH submittal would be helpful with payroll. As senior accountant frequently works late on Tuesdays to make the ACH submittal. As the table indicates, the timing and the rate calculation does make a difference. Our First Financial does have a minimum interest rate of .05% with the T bill, the T bill rates would have to increase to 2.15% for Texas Bank's proposal to exceed First Financial. Any questions for Monica regards to this
Who are we using right now?
We are currently with Texas Bank, and we have no issues with them. They, you know, they're both local banks, they're both reputable banks. A lot of the proposals are, they were saying, you know, neither one of them were going to, they were going to waive the fees, you know, just your, you know, standard banking fees and, and they had, you know, similar hours and, and, you know, obviously they're going to follow the rules for collateralization at 102%. It just came down to kind of the, the extended time on the ACH being a little bit better for our staff. And then obviously the interest rate was a, was a factor.
We have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the acceptance of request for proposal for depository services to First Financial Bank.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same side. So that'll vote to council with positive recommendation to accept First Financial Bank RFP. Item number 11, over 65 freeze. In the staff report, staff respectfully recommends that committee forward the ordinance to the city council for their approval. I don't have a copy of an ordinance, but the background is over 65 tax break has recently been approved by Eberath County. The state of Texas also gives cities the authority to grant a freeze of taxes for those residents over the age of 65. Multiple, several of, of us have expressed interest in considering a similar measure. Currently, the school district has 1,065 residences that qualify for the over 65 break for the school district. We are waiting for a copy of a, I didn't see one in the agenda. We don't have a copy of an ordinance. Is that correct, Alan?
That's correct. I've not had an opportunity to review it today. I got it this afternoon from Randy. I'll send it out tomorrow morning.
Okay. We request the calculation of the fiscal impact. I know Mr. Carey is there this evening to answer any questions. And I know that her office is, and the appraisal district has worked with Mr. Thurman on some of these items or questions. Are there any questions by the committee on this item?
What's the impact?
Well, I, I had.
Which we've got, right?
The number I got from the appraisal district was that we have, currently have 990 parcels with a total value of 177 million, 107,040 that would qualify. And I probably have to just turn it over to Jennifer to talk about potential impacts. She understands that much better than I do.
The county district's giving you the values.
Correct, right. That's the value. That would be our base value.
Values not what we freeze. It's tax dollars that freeze. So.
If you don't mind, all the people watching this one because this, this works. Why don't you, if you don't mind, get up there and speak my mind.
At our current, at that current valuation, at our current tax rate, that's 782,813 in revenue.
That would be locked.
And that's what, that would be?
That would be the number.
The frozen number.
That would be the freeze. But since you're looking at it in the calendar year of 22, it would be based on your 22 tax dollars. It's not going to be based on any of the tax dollars that we know of at this time for anybody that is over the age of 65. You also offer, the statute for school districts is the freeze is on over 65 and disabled persons. So you, as a city, and us as a county, have the option to do one or the other or both. The county chose to only do the over 65 accounts. So you, the city, offers an over 65 exemption of 15,000, and you also offer the disabled person exemption of 10,000 that gets deducted off of their taxable value on only the home sites. So if you have 20 acres, and I better use 25 because you can homestead up to 20. If you have 25 acres, it's cheaper on you to keep the 19, or I should say 24 acres in ag and the one acre as your home site. But. to keep the 19, or I should say 24 acres in ag and the one acre as your home site. But some people opt to have the whole thing. Granted, the people that have 100% disabled vet the exemption because they get to freeze everything. Am I helping or hurting?
Does the, does the 100% disabled vet, do they pay any property tax?
No.
That's why, that's why, okay, you said freeze. That's why I'm like.
On, on the home site. It's only on homestead.
Yes.
So if they have ag land, it's more beneficial for them to turn the whole 20 acres into home site.
Mr. Huckbee, to, I guess find a short answer for your question. Ms. Carey's provided a comparison. If we had approved this in 2020, the, the payment by over 65 was about $700,000. In 2021, the payment would have been just over $750,000, which would be a $50,000 a year difference. Our tax, our tax receivables are somewhere in the 6 million to 6.5 million dollar range. The, the, excuse me, disabled would go from 15,000 in 2020 to 16,900 in 2021, or 1,815 in 2026. So the total, if the freeze had been adopted in 2020, was 52,090.17.
And these are just down in dirty numbers that I got after talking with Alan and then talking with Monica. I called my software vendor and said, hey, can you do what you did for me back in December for the, for the county and, and run the city's numbers real quick? And the only actual numbers that we have, of course, are the 20s and the 21s. We don't, have no clue what 22 is going to even look like. So this just gives you an idea. Monica did a projection. If you have this much increase in the fact that the homesteads have a 10% cap of going up and estimating what, around 60?
Around 60.
So. Because your first year of freeze is going to be 22 and you'll see it when it reflects in 23.
Mr. Chair, I'm not a member of your committee, but can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What does this do to our existing exemptions? Do they remain in place?
As long as you do not change your amount, your amount is 15,000 for the over 65 exemption. So as long as that remains the same, if you raise your exemption to 25 or 20 or something, then definitely it will change what your freeze level would be.
But that remains intact unless we elect to change it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And those are things that we would want to be done prior to the appraisal district mailing notices when they have to send out appraisal notices. People hate getting those appraisal notices and by the time they get the tax statement, it's a lot different.
And this is a freeze of the actual tax pay?
Tax dollars on the home portion only.
Correct. And that would never change as they continued homestead ownership of the property unless they did significant improvements to the property.
Unless they added on to it?
Right.
Added swimming pool?
Right.
Added an enclosed carport?
And that would be adjusted?
Yes.
To the current value at the current tax rate and added to their total?
So if they added on a swimming pool of 25,000, they're not going to go back to do the whole thing. Only the tax dollars on that 25,000 times the latest tax rate would be added to their freeze ceiling. Because when you do a freeze, it creates a ceiling. So as we've, I don't know how much of you have seen the, the tax notices in the, in the past couple of years, but with school taxes that have had the freezes for quite a few years, the ones that don't have a, a bonded indebtedness or anything so that they're paying on, as the state legislature mandated and the tax rates have been dropping and the values have not really been changing, some of the people have wound up with less school taxes this year than they paid last year. Now, that's not going to remain the same because they created a ceiling. So if their ceiling was $1,500 in taxes and this year they only wound up paying 1,200 in, in school taxes, but next year something happens, the values go up, the highest they can go is the 15,000. So when we say there's a freeze, there is, but you're creating a freeze ceiling.
Okay. I think that's an important explanation for people to understand how it works.
And Monica, you said the, the physical note on this would be about $60,000 you're anticipating?
Yes, for the first year.
For the first year?
Yeah. Because then of course, as values and things rise and, you know, depending on where we, and that's the, assuming that we went the, the full 10% increase on all the properties and then us going with the no new revenue, if you decided to go higher, it'd be a little bit more.
And the total number of properties, Ricky, was 990?
990.
But I think that's important, an ever-moving number. Is that, I mean, that's a fair way to look at that, Jennifer? Is that correct?
Well, I don't know what the appraisal district's giving you working on. I mean, they're looking at '22 stuff. I'm still way back in '21. So the latest supplement I did, you have, right today, 1,082 accounts that have an over 65 exemption on them. So if they've, I mean, that's, that's going to be a constantly moving target with people moving in, people moving out. And so that's not even getting into the transfer of a freeze that I talked to Monica about because that can happen too. You, you freeze in one house, you move to another, you're going to be freezing, you're going to be transferring that percentage of that freeze over to the new home. So there's, there's a lot of different moving variables that can happen.
So, so is it fair to say it's virtually impossible to project what it would, what it would look like five years from now?
Well, I can tell you that from just this last supplement that I worked on Sunday, there were, I guess we, the appraisal district sent to me supplemental changes that had, there was 10 over 65 freezes that came on school district because the rest of us aren't frozen yet. So it's a, it's a constantly moving target. Years ago, you signed up your exemptions. If you hadn't signed up, so bad, you'd wait till next year. Now you have up to three years to go back and claim. So we're constantly doing adjustments and refunds. And Jennifer hates refunds. But anyway. So it's, it's a moving target all the time. It's, it changes. So for a school district, if I just had to add an over 65 in 2019, that created a freeze and so I had to adjust the 20s and then the 21s because it had to go back to what that ceiling was.
That's great information. Jennifer, thank you for, for spending time.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate it.
Call me or email me if you have any other questions that pop up.
I'm sure we will.
I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not positive. Six of my staff are positive, but I am not yet.
Good luck.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Barnes, I.
Thank you so much.
How of the cities that you've been in, what has been your experience with, how many of them had an over 65 exemption or freeze?
Honestly, I think two of them did and two of them did not. I'm not sure if we voted, if the council voted in the, the tax exemption, the $15,000 exemption, or if they voted to freeze the taxes in the city. I'm not sure. City of Saxi, I believe, did freeze the taxes while.
It's, in my, in my research, throughout the metroplex, in certain areas, it's very common. I mean, it's very common. City of Fort Worth, Northridge, and Hills, all these, they all, they all have it countywide and citywide.
Do they have exemptions also?
Correct.
For 65 and then they have the freeze?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, one of the reasons I wanted us to look at this is because it's going to be on our doorstep in a month or two anyway. So I guess the only recommendation I would have is, I mean, I don't, to me, might as well go ahead and add the disabled part of it as well, in my opinion. Yeah. Our jud item allows us to do both those tonight.
I, I, because I think that the goal of this is to help people that are on fixed income. And, and, and as we have the growth and the ability to do that, that's, that's, to me, that's the goal of this, is to help those people that are on fixed income. The taxes go up, but their paycheck is, is the same every year. And we need to, I think we do need to do this to help them do that.
One of the things that, that helped me to understand this is to look at it in terms of a, of a TIF, which you're all familiar with. In a TIF, we deal with the increment or the delta between the base and, and the future years. And we've all along said, it's not money that we, we have. It's money that we would have. And so this is the, this is the same mindset.
I would make a motion that we move forward with a tax freeze over 65 and for the disabled exemptions.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right. Motion, Carey's in a positive recommendation to council. And item number 12, the issue of the strategic obligation. Staff is requesting the finance committee recommend moving forward issuing strategic obligation to council for approval on February 1st, 2022. Proceeds from the issuing's books will be obligated $20 million for water sewer and related infrastructure and $2 million for park improvements. At a timetable as a part of the attachment questions have also arisen regarding the refunding of the series 2013 GO bonds. The GO bonds cannot be refunded by issued COs. However, state law does allow for the issue of refunding without an election. Essentially, it gives us the option to do the issuance of both the revenue bonds and the GO as a package deal, but they would be two separate issuances. Would save on issuance costs taking into market. There is a substantial fiscal impact of refunding those 2013 GO bonds to the tune of $400,000 over the term of those bonds, depending on which, which method of financing we choose. Any questions or discussions for Monica on this? No questions? Do we have a motion? Am I frozen? Is she yelling?
No, we hear you. I'll make a motion, why not, that we recommend a full council, the, uh, issuance of obligation. Let's see. I guess that's presented to, that's presented to council, yes.
Second.
So we've got motion to the issuance of the COs. And Brady, did your motion include the brief, explore the refunding of the 2013?
It, it did not. It did not, Mr. Hasky. That was my takeaway. We did not want to do that. We do want to do it. Okay, I guess we do.
We don't want to say.
I guess we need to amend the motion then.
I'll make a motion to, to include the 2013 bonds in there.
Second.
How much is remaining on that 2013 bond issue? Do I, am I overlooking that?
I would like to get that in the discussion.
Is that an amendment to the original motion then?
That'd be correct.
To you, a second.
And we have, and Brady, you seconded that motion?
That's fine.
Okay. No further discussion?
I would just like a breakdown of those GO bonds. I mean, I absolutely, if we can save 460,259 by doing it, we should save half a million dollars. But can I get a breakdown of what that is?
It's in the, in the packet. If you'll scroll down, there's one that says Stevenville Taxes, General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2022. Let me see what page it's on in this, in the whole packet.
Maybe verbally, can we?
Yes, I will go over it verbally.
For, for the people watching.
We have a payment coming up in February and of course we'll have to pay that. But what we would be refunding, the debt service would be just over 4 million. And then the, the new refunding debt service would be 3.5 million. And so you're looking at about 460, 259 that we would be saving on interest and being able to do that. And that, it's, it matures in 2033. That bond has an average coupon rate of 3.76 and they're looking at a, a true interest cost on the refunding is 1.45%. So. It's a fairly significant.
It's a huge savings.
So, and, and we, Mr. Barnes, if, if you want, I, I think we kind of need direction on whether we're looking at a 15-year, 20-year, or 25-year debt issuance.
On the COs?
Yes, please.
It was my understanding, coming out of Thursday's meeting, that, that it would be a 20-year. I mean, I think that was determined.
That's kind of the num, I wasn't at that meeting, so sorry. But yeah, that's kind of what our.
That's what fits in with our rate structure and how we did everything, planning for this because we're not raising any taxes. We're not doing anything for this. It's part of our rate structure that we've done that allows us to go to market, to get today's prices, to do these projects.
Sure.
And would, that did not include the potential 2 million for parks?
It does.
It does. Of course, that's a separate funding source.
To clarify the uses. The proposed use so far is to.
Oh, I see.
Perform our, our wellfield work. That would be drilling five additional water wells that will service our community for, for decades to come. It would include the infrastructure necessary on the 568, or 563, sorry about that, whatever it is.
He's next.
It would include the transmission line back to the airport pump station. It would also include, excuse me, redoing, and, and by redoing, I mean completely reconstructing the utilities on, along Long Street from, from Alexander to Graham. It would also, because of the, the nature and the, the poor conditions of the, the utilities, would require us also to pave that, that street. And everybody's favorite, anytime we do major construction work, we do have to make it ADA compliant or Texas accessible, accessibility compliant. And all of those costs are rolled into the estimates on that, on those projects. There may, we, we've estimated these on an inflationary scale based on, on what we understand should be done. And any additional funds, it will be worded that any additional funds will go to fund water sewer projects elsewhere in the city. And again, these are our user, they're already paying for them on the water. We are already paying for them on the water bill.
Did you say the third item was the Eastside Sewer?
No, sir. We worded it, or we will word it to where it will be discretionary. No, sir, uh, we worded it, or we will word it to where it, it will be discretionary, uh, for the council. We, we said water and sewer projects throughout the community. Some of it very well may be phase three of, uh, the Eastside Sewer. There may be some budgetary, already budgetary numbers assigned to the Eastside Sewer that, that may, again, leave a residual amount of any bond, or C O proceeds.
That's strictly because we don't know what phase one's going to cost us.
We don't know what phase one.
Of the money that we've, we've already.
Correct. And been able to bid it yet.
Correct.
Right.
So we may have some savings out of there that can immediately go to the phase three portion. And that's why we need to leave this.
And, and we have allocated some funds in the budget to also go to phase three. I feel relatively comfortable that we should be able to cover most of the cost of phase three, if not all of the cost of phase three.
Let's do it then.
Any other discussion or question? Okay, so this is the vote on the amendments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And then, original vote, or the original motion?
As a.
As amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, same sign. Alright. Mr. Mayor, I think that includes all of the items on our finance committee meeting this evening.
Thanks, sir.
Turn back over to you.
Uh, Ms. Durfee, you want to go to tourism? We have some visitors need to leave, I understand.
Okay. The, do you want to go? I'll let you go.
Okay. Um, we received a request from the Tarleton State Rodeo team for the fifty-fifth annual Stampede Rodeo, which is held in April. We have funded them in the past. I'm not sure if they had it last year because of COVID. They are in our budget for seventy-five hundred, and this is an allowable hotel occupancy tax expense as it is boarding and advertising. It's a multi-day event.
Just a couple of questions real quick.
I know, yeah, this is kind of a carryover, I don't know, I want to put it from back in the chamber days. I guess as we've been servicing this event for a couple of years now, I mean, is there anything that Tarleton provides us with to verify that they're building hotels?
They certainly can, and I'm happy to contact the hotels as well. This is a large rodeo similar to the one, the Cowboy Capital of the World rodeo. They either meet or exceed the numbers that attend this event, and I'm happy to verify the hotel stays.
And actually, I want to continue to support that a hundred percent in this amount, or more amount, but I just want to make sure that we hold everybody to the same criteria that we ask about, so.
Does this level of, of contribution on our part secure a sponsorship role for the city as it has in the past?
Yes, it does.
I would make a motion we, uh, approve funding at the staff recommended levels.
Second, then.
So I can get a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. And then, our next one is about the Mula Fest.
Staff met with Charlie Diggs, the promoter who's doing the Buckles and Bugs last month to explore the possibility of their taking over the event and hosting it at the Steenfield City Park. We wanted to explore the possibility of doing that and also offering a title sponsorship in lieu of underwriting the entire event. We saw some value for him doing so and, uh, having more experience in hosting festivals than, than we do, so, um, what is on the table is a title sponsorship for this event. We put down a number similar to Buckles and Bugs, but we can explore any number for that.
Is, is that the extent of the city's contribution?
They will provide all staff.
Security, et cetera?
They like to work with local police departments for that, uh, in other cities, so there will be some, but not to the extent that we've, as far as overall city staff that we've provided in the past.
Like, it's been a huge input of, of staff time before, during, and after, I think. And, and that's why I asked if this was going to be the total extent of our contribution.
It, it will not completely wipe out what city contributes, but it will definitely free up our city staff so they can focus on other events like July Fourth and sports things that they have almost in the same time period.
Do we take the format with the event, be the same to what's been years past, or are we going to try to reinvent the whole event, or is he just going to mirror the one event he's hosting a couple of months previous?
I think the only difference, main difference will be the, he will fence the park and charge an admission fee. But, um, the balloons will still be there, the musicians will still be there, the food trucks, it will have the same feel as our other event has had.
So that was my question, I could sense I wasn't in the conversation with Charlie, that would be my one thing, is that I'm sure there's a lot of people that just go down and wander around, and are they going to want to buy, you know, I just think we need to make sure, if we go this direction, that we need to make sure that the tickets are funny, or, what's the word?
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
Affordable, yes.
Reasonable enough that if it's not somebody that's down there, they just want to wander around, that it's not out of their chance of going also.
Sure.
I, I feel like last year was a great event, I mean, I think we're on the cusp of something really becoming special, so I hate to cheap out and under commit resources and, and take a huge step back on that event, I really do, so I just, if we decide to do this, I hope we can communicate to Mr. Charlie that this is where we're at last year and expectation moving forward, and I mean, I, I think we're awfully close to really becoming a regional type event, and I hate for it to go back. I know the resources that involves the staff, but I mean, I'm not saying that we need to continue to host that event, but.
Well, and.
My, my thing, we've spent a lot of money getting this thing launched up. Maybe it's not twenty, but twenty thousand would be about twenty percent of what we spent the last two years.
Yeah.
Each year. And so, you know, even if it was a little more, um, but we had a turnkey type of festival going on. I could see more and more of this happening down there, especially as we try to tie downtown and the park to, to this, and getting even, you know, our local artists and Larry Joe and different things involved, I think this could be something that, that better. And I, I do agree that the event's gotten better each year, but we're still not good at it, and government usually isn't great putting on events, and if we could have a professional come in that does it, that's used to doing it, then, uh, we may get a lot more bang for our buck and spend much less of our allocated resources, it could allow us to go do some of the other things we want to do.
Another point that he brings to the table, uh, he can bring larger name bands and better musicians than.
For a long time, this, we, we've got to change, and I think you see that with this, you know, some of these people we've had, probably all of them we've had before that's come to this, but I think that's something that is very important.
If I might ask a question. This is a one-year commitment, correct? Is that what y'all talked about with, uh, with, uh, the?
I believe so.
We didn't discuss it.
Yeah, we didn't really discuss the, the length of time.
Okay.
However, I would recommend that, that we do it on a one-year contract in the event that it is not what we anticipated it to be. I think we'll get some, some appearance of what it's going to be with the Buckles and Bugs, uh, coming up in March and everything, and and, and so I think we should have some idea at that point. But, uh, what, the, the advantage that I see in doing this, and I'm sorry to step on you there, Julie, but, but the advantage I see is, in the event that this is a short-term thing, a year, two years, five years, our staff will have the ability to watch how it's put on, take pointers from, from the professional and, and perhaps reach the, the regional festival that was spoken about earlier.
Right. Twenty thousand dollars is the total amount?
Proposed.
You about to say something? I, I guess, I, the only last thing I'd say real quick on it, and I'll shut up, is just, I, I would not be opposed either if we can make this commitment to twenty, but, I mean, I understand if there needs to be additional requests to come, I would not be opposed to that personally, I mean, to make sure that the event goes as well as need to go, so. I think Brandon's a hundred percent correct, we've committed way too much to this event just to as I'm gonna say, get cheap on it now.
Right.
We need to find a way to save some money, and we don't need to be the business of hosting events every year.
If you'd rather contribute more upfront, if it made those ticket prices more reasonable for people to have access to the park, that might be a negotiating point.
And it sounds like to me maybe we don't know what our commitment needs to be. Um, and so I hate to go over commit, because as soon as we say we're going to do forty, then we'll spend forty, and maybe we don't need to spend forty, but this is the way this stuff goes.
Forty is a little bit.
But, I would say, I'm not, I'm not taking off the table either to come back, entertain more money at a future date, so.
That was my whole thought whenever Julie and I discussed this last week of, she told me that they had had the meeting, I, and my first thought was looking at how much we had spent previously to what we could get and save some money to go towards other things in the future, and if we do need to put more money, then, then I'm not opposed to that either, like Mr. Reynolds said.
We could, we could do five times this amount and end up cheaper than we have the last two years.
Right.
Four times. Four times.
We've only lost eight.
Yes, sir.
I would just recommend, um, that in the negotiations, I, I would like to see something that would protect us from, if this turns out to be a one-year event, and it doesn't live up to our expectations, a guarantee that he can't, within a certain period of time, hold a balloon music festival within a certain number of miles of Steenfield for a certain period of time after that.
That's a great idea.
That is a good idea.
Okay. Do I have a motion? What do you think, like, to make a motion?
I move that we recommend a full council contracting with Mr. Diggs and his promotional company for the, uh, hosting of the Mula event with the city serving as underwriter at the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Mr. Cook, we'll do items three and six, nomination, and we'll come back to four and five in, in our special counsel meeting.
Okay, that's fine. First, we'd like to have a, we have a report from the Main Street Advisory Board. This is kind of an overview from their design review, Rita will, uh, Rita Cook will give this report, and there are some pictures that go along with it, uh, that, uh, will be posted here, and so. Rita, it's all yours.
Uh, thank you for having me come tonight. I'm the chair of the Design Committee for the Main Street Program, and the purpose of the Design Committee is to, uh, support a community's transformation by enhancing the physical and visual assets that set the commercial district apart. And so really what we're all about is making downtown a beautiful place, uh, that people want to come to. The people who serve on the Design Committee are Christine Newton, Daryl Carpenter, Kim Wilson, Kelly Salt, and Stephanie Beach, and, uh, the chair, who also attends, is Julie Lorenz. Uh, this committee has been meeting and trying to make some decisions about things, and as we met, we started thinking about the fact that before we start visioning about where we should be going, we need to take some time to stop and look around and do a survey or an audit of the downtown area. So that's what we did. On December first, uh, we met as a group to do a walk around downtown. And I have some pictures today for you to see, and they're not all, uh, aligned with the things that I'm going to talk about, but you can kind of see the conditions as I walk through this. Uh, we started at the alley near Hearsay Bar, and, uh, I will say some of these things will be, uh, just observations of what we're seeing. Some of them, of course, are things that we talked about as we walked, did our walk around town. Uh, we said the alley between Hearsay and the other buildings could be painted to increase interest and public use. We noticed that there's curb damage between the alley and Scott's that needs some repair. Uh, we saw sandbags that were left in flower beds and, that needed to be removed. Some of the things we noticed that are that miscellaneous signs are kind of haphazardly stuck in different flower beds, and uh, we tried to think about if we needed a designated area for that or not. Uh, we had several fir hydrants that we noticed downtown, and we said that those might even be painted to create some sort of interest. As we walked, walked around, we saw that, uh, we have a lot of buildings that have two-story buildings and only the bottom part is being used, and we talked about the idea of lofts, and of course, that would require, uh, the city to review and revise their, the limiting regulations right now towards those lofts. We have some benches, uh, that are already placed, but, uh, one of the things that Main Street recommended to us in the report that they did for us was that those park, park benches be faced out facing towards the street instead of the opposite way where they're, uh, facing right now. We also talked about, uh, we have some areas that have, uh, yellow along the curb that there's some niches that we might be able to, um, put permanent tables or chairs there for people to have a place to sit in front of some of the bars and some of the restaurants that we have here in town. Uh, we then went from college to Graham Street area, and, uh, we, we talked about, uh, what's going to happen, you know, with the senior citizens and that what's going to happen to that building, and we don't know what's going to happen, but when we looked at it, we just said that might be a viable parking lot for county employees now who tend to park around in, around the square area, it would give them a place to park elsewhere, to leave those spaces open for people who are visiting downtown. One of the things we saw was a tall sidewalk in front of the senior citizens, and it's very steep, and, um, we felt like this was kind of an unsafe area, and that, especially in the current location where the senior citizens are right now, because it's just difficult for those people to get up and down those stairs. Uh, the sidewalks behind the Allen Law Farm are crushed and need, uh, replacement. Uh, some of the suggestions that we talked about was lighting up the courthouse steeple using existing city light poles and attaching needed floodlights to them. We talked about, uh, decorating sidewalks with brick highlights, and, uh, one of the things we saw was, at one of the corners, uh, there was a, a post, uh, that was just sticking up in, at the corner of Graham and College, it's cut off, and it's just sticking up in the middle of the sidewalk. And I don't know about you, but I could probably walk along and walk into that without even, without even trying.
Used to have a mailbox on it.
Yeah. We talked about, uh, we talked about placing some more benches and some trash cans, we have trash cans around town, but maybe placing some on every corner. And one of the things we talked about was, uh, we have Mula that's on the pedestal right now, we know that Mula's having a spa treatment elsewhere, we, we talked about the, the thought of moving Mula even over to the Cowboy Hall of Fame or another location where, uh, people can get their picture made with Mula. You know, when we had all these Christmas things that were situated around town, it's just amazing how many people wanted to come and have their pictures made with that, so that would be a good way to, uh, honor the, the history of Mula, and at some point, look at. So that would be a good way to honor the history of Mula, and at some point, look at some more artistic kinds of things made out of bronze that possibly could celebrate that history. We talked about moving like tables and chairs in the current parking area in front of Rocking P. There's an unsolicited bench that was dropped off in front of the Allen Building, and I don't know if you've noticed, but I've been monitoring that. I think it must have been dropped off, I don't know how long ago, but it's still sitting there. So, we saw that. One of the things we discussed was just using the street cleaner to remove leaves and cigarette butts in front of the Chamber Office and in the square, there are buildups. And, you know, some places actually have, the sheriff will have inmates come and remove all the trash and everything around the square on a weekly basis. I know where I've lived before, I've seen that, and that's a real productive thing. There's a light pole in front of Kerbo's that it's split and needs to be replaced, and there's also a lot of sandbags and construction signage that hasn't been removed yet. On North Bownap, we talked about painting the plaza concrete blue and gold or purple and white to create a more inviting location. That is really a great asset for our community and one that we feel like we could utilize better. Some of the beds around the trees in the plaza have, they need ground cover, and a lot of the plants are dead, and the irrigation lines are actually sitting on top of the ground as you walk past there. There was a partial brick pathway that goes across a flower bed, and it was just kind of falling apart, so if anybody walked across it, they might stumble, so we talked about that. One of the things we did talk about, and this was just, you know, as we walked, you know, we were dreaming about what we could do, and that's to consider maybe placing a bronze statue of a cowboy on the Plaza Place, on the Plaza, to celebrate the cowboy history that we have here, and maybe place some historical signs with action pictures depicting, explaining significance of the plaza. We all know what the plaza's about, but I'm not sure that everybody who comes to town knows what the plaza is about. And maybe even a wall that names all of the world-class cowgirls and cowboys in this area, that would be amazing. And I think we would have a lot of support from the rodeo folks who would be excited about that. There's a curb cut in front of Slum Pickens that is no longer handicap accessible, and I knew that because I'd had my dad downtown, and he wasn't able to get up that. He had one of those motorized carts, and he couldn't get up it. Considering replacing lamp poles and maybe looking at matching the county ones, I drove downtown the other night, and just driving around the square, we had twelve lampposts, and out of the twelve, only four were working, so there were eight were out. So, you know, it was dark downtown. Some general observations is that many of the sidewalks downtown have deteriorated, and they're just not safe. There's holes that you can step in, there's big crevices, especially on the corners. If you look at those pictures up there, you can see that they're fractured. I noticed today, as I drove past Skinny's over there, they have redone that curb, and it looks nice. It looks nice, and maybe that's something that we can think about. Trash cans and street signs that are missing could be replaced. There's a lot of weeds and things like that that are growing out of the curbs and sidewalks. And although this is not a, not a observation, there are numerous empty buildings downtown, and maybe some incentives could be considered to encourage the owners of those buildings to lease them. Encouraging canopies on buildings will create a more inviting environment. And then parking space, whatever we can do to encourage more parking space. And Stacy, can you kind of just flip through those, and I want to briefly mention a little, can you do that where I can? I just want to mention, as you look through this, you can see some of the curbs. There's the thing on the Cowboy Hall of Fame, but you know, that's something that's hard to read. You have to go up, and then it's still hard to read, so, things like that. And there you can see the sidewalk over there is with the lines and things that are above it, that are above the ground, so all the irrigation pipes and things like that. That's another, that's another view of that. You can see some of these things are cosmetic kinds of things, which I think would be something, you know, that's kind of low-hanging fruit that maybe Main Street's gonna be looking at. There's that post that's split in front of Kerbo's, and you can see some of the stuff that's growing out of different locations. Again, the sidewalks, and you can go to the next one, you can see just some different things where holes are in the sidewalks. There's the bench that I keep monitoring. I'm not sure who owns that bench. And you can see just, you know, leaves and dirt and things like that accumulate, the hole where a pole was before. And there's that post that's sticking up on the corner, so, and you can just kind of see there that it's kind of, you know, cracked and broken up, and again, just not, and there's a steep, I think that's the steep steps there, the senior citizens. You know, I know when we did sidewalks here a long time ago, they probably had them for buggies and things like that, but I don't know what the percentage is of senior citizens in Stevensville, but you have a lot of people who are over sixty-five and who are under five foot two, that these curbs are hard to get up and down. There you can see, that's just a really big open crevice there. I think that's on the corner by Scott Allen's Law Firm. And then you can see, again, more leaves and things like that. The reason we did that is there's just wiring up there in the top of that that you can see that's left sticking out. So, anyway, we want to, as a design group, to come back to you with priorities and recommendations, but we had to start with this first. We wanted to do an audit and kind of see where we are, and we want you to see where we're gonna start from at this point, because we're gonna probably, as a group, start now thinking about things we can come back and bring to you as a recommendation from the Main Street Board. Any questions?
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. As Rita said, this is just a report from the Main Street Design Review Committee for the Main Street Board, and they want to leave open the option of coming back to the council in the future and with some more positive recommendations of things that can be done. So, the next item on there is, you want to do the number six, correct? Yes, sir. Is the boards and commissions. This is a discussion item only, and we have been asked to look at this and to discuss this in among our committee. And that is the possibility, do we have more boards than necessary? Should we think about collapsing some of those? The ones particularly mentioned to us, and I agreed to put it on here for discussion, was the Senior Citizens Board, the Library Board, and that, those two, along with the possibility of Parks and Recreation Board, and of collapsing those into one advisory And I'd like to get some discussion from the group as to, is this worth going? I can tell you that the request that we discussed this came from, out of Parks and Leisure Services or Parks and Recreation, and Darren was, had, one of our councilmen was interested in us looking at this, and I believe Kelly was on staff. We wanted to put it on here just for discussion for our members of this, of the nominating committee, because it would be up to us to make a recommendation to the city with regard to this type of organizational change. I can see the positives and the negatives both on this. Politically, I'm not sure that it would be, it may be somewhat difficult to do, simply because of, we've had these boards in place for a long period of time. Practically, the fact is that it could work to an advantage if you had one advisory board. Now, one of the things that, and you had representatives from each one of those entities making up that advisory board, and say you pick three people from senior citizens, three from the library, and three from Parks and Recreation, and they all become the Leisure Services Advisory Board. That is something, that's a possibility. It's a different way of doing it. You could also take just two of those, the Senior Citizens Board and the Library Advisory Board, and combine those two into one similarly. We could do nothing and leave it as it is, as a matter of fact, and that's, that's, I don't see a problem either way with this, but if there's any that'd like to comment about this, I'd like to hear it.
Did Darren have any thoughts on what the advantages would be of combining them specifically, or?
We can ask him. Is Darren still on? Darren, would you like to comment about that?
Hey, sorry, I was having to step away. I'm trying to listen in, do the kids dinner.
Sorry about that.
So, I mean, the advantage to me is Kelly has numerous committees she's over, and it's a lot of work to keep up with every committee on top of everything else, trying to run all these things, and we all have, I think you've structured this correctly. You could get this down to one, maybe two committees instead of three. I mean, ideally, one with representation from each of these groups. So, a little different committee makeup for that one group, or one Recreation and Leisure Services group, that would just be easier to manage. So, other than that, I don't know that there's a huge advantage. I know that there's been talks, and I've been all of those committees. It wasn't great to be on the committee, because not much comes out of it. So, can we kind of merge these together and make it where there's a little more substance? So, it was just a thought. Kelly and I talked about it a little bit. It's not something we have to take action on, it's just something we wanted to bring up.
Okay. Thank you, Darren.
And is your committee and his committee ought to get together and bring a recommendation, or bring some recommendations, options, in benefit?
It would work, too.
That'd be my recommendation.
What's fading?
I can say it there. I mean, that's a big task that Kelly's got to prepare for in addition to preparing for council committee meetings from a preparation standpoint, and giving each of the advisory boards the, you know, to his point, you know, is this, you know, we've got another meeting, so throw something together, and not really anything comes out of it, or can we really focus our efforts and really get something done effectively? I guess there's always that sense or that feeling of grasp of power, but at the same time, I mean, I guess that would be our responsibility to make sure that whatever's written in the new ordinance that adopts the advisory boards, we avoid that concentration of power, but allow for effective, effective meetings that have effective and positive impacts on the community services that we're providing.
Justin, as a matter of fact, and you're right about that, I believe, the, we put together, I mean, and we've probably had these things since day one in the city, but, and these are advisory boards for the senior citizen center and for the library and for Parks and Recreation. And if you look at the, at the ordinance that created these, and you have those in your packets, too, frankly, it indicates that these were supposed to be advisory to the council. They're supposed to present ideas on programming and on activity and so forth in a particular area to the council, and make recommendations as such as to, as to what direction they're going. And sometimes we get it, and sometimes we don't. And most of the time, we don't. How about it? We'll just get it peripherally. So, I would, I think maybe the mayor's got a good idea here, that perhaps we use this opportunity, and Darren, if you would be willing, and to meet, and we will have a joint meeting of the, of our, of Leisure Services and our nominating committee, and we will discuss this and see if we need to take this any further. How do you, how the rest of you people feel?
I think that's an idea. I think the point of bringing it up tonight is just to get feedback from general, you know, from everybody on council and see where they wanted to take this, and see if there was interest, or if we just need to let this idea die. So, if we want to take it forward, I think, no, we've got to flesh out a lot of things with this idea to make it work, and, you know, I don't want to just cancel one of these, and, you know, I want to have a plan going forward so these people can continue to serve out some of their time, and then we can phase this in maybe in the next fiscal year or something like that. So, I think sitting down and talking further with people would be a good idea.
I guess my hesitation is that one committee or another feel like that they have been left out and don't feel like they're adequately represented, or adequately represent the group that they intended to, be it seniors or park or library or whoever. If there's a way to meld those together so that they all feel like they're equally representing the group that they chose to represent, I don't know that that's necessarily be negative, but that may prove to be very problematic to do.
And you're absolutely right, and it's probably the only way this could happen, and truthfully. But if we, if we start now and we start working with the different boards, and even bringing them together, they're all under Darren's committee in Leisure Services, so we would have representation from those in meeting together. So, that would be, it looked to me like it'd be a good way of us.
Might be the best way.
At least further the discussion, you know, and it may come out and we don't do anything and everything, but it will at least mean that we have looked at it and everything. So, okay? If that's agreeable to you guys.
These are volunteers, but some of them are quite passionate about their field.
Yes.
Is that safe to say?
I think that's very safe to say. We agree.
I think if you took a poll of some of these people, though, they would feel like they're very underutilized because of the way we've got these things structured.
Yeah.
So, I think we can strengthen that. I'm just not a big fan of, this is the way we've always done it, let's continue to do it this way. Let's look at a different way and see if we find a better way to do this, so that we can be, you know, more responsible with Kelly's time and how we, how we move forward with these things. So, I think we can find a better way. There's a better solution. We just gotta, we've got to sit down and talk about it, flesh out.
I think that's absolutely right.
Well, and I think in this direction is maybe the right way to go. Okay?
I agree.
I agree. Okay, we all agree on this, Darren, so get ready, we'll, we'll set it up with you, okay? Okay.
On our Parks and Leisure Committee and Developmental Services Committee, we've removed those agenda items for tonight, so the only item we have left is, I will adjourn the city council committee meeting and convene city council special council meeting, and go to item, agenda, item number one. Mr. Barnes, is that you?
I guess it is. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you have a memorandum of understanding between the city of Stevensville and the Red County, Texas. It's for the running of the vaccination center that we had during... It's for the running of the vaccination center that we had during the first week of COVID. The reason for this MOU at this point is, is that for, our agreement originally was to split 50-50 with the county, and we would do the reporting to FEMA. What FEMA has instructed us is that we have to have the MOU in order to get them reimbursed, and that's what this is.
Is that your recommendation?
Yeah, recommendation is to approve the MOU.
Is there, is there a motion?
It's a move.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion, second. Any further discussion? If you'd vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Next item, consider removal of member of a planning zoning commission. That'd be Mr. Cook.
Mr. Chair, we, this was on our agenda to discuss at the, in our nominating committee. Can we go back to that and do that, or, because the committee hasn't?
We can, we discussed it as a committee, but we're in council meeting now. I was, I was instructed that we used to take a straight counsel, so let's, you can let the committee take over and discuss it, and if you have a recommendation during committee, then do so at that time.
The, okay, we will, we will do that. The, the, we have a member of the, of the council that we would recommend that they be removed.
Counselor?
Um, excuse me, the planning and zoning. And it's an alternate number two in the planning and zoning, and, and would recommend that that place be vacated. It is presently occupied, or we, this council approved Cory Jenkins for that particular position, and we would recommend that that he be removed, and asked to reapply at some point in the future. And, and that would be my recommendation to the, to the committee.
Because of the failure to attend?
No, sir, because of the little legal problem.
Okay.
I'd like to know how the committee feels about that.
Would support that.
I'd do too.
Okay. Could I hear, can we take a motion here, or are we, or is it okay with?
Well, I, we're in the regular council, so all takes, I'd just say take it for advisory committee, and then at that point, you can make a motion if you'd like to.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would make a, I would move that we, we remove Mr. Cory Jenkins as alternate number two on the planning and zoning commission, and ask that he apply again at some point in the future.
Darren, a second?
A second.
Just a clarification, has he, have we spoken to him?
No, sir.
Do you have a discussion? Here now, if you'd vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Next item is yours as well, I believe.
The next item that we have is vacancy on the Tourism and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board. We have one person, frankly, from the, that is eligible for that, represents the hotel, and we would recommend that, and here I, if you'll forgive me, Stacy, I have lost that sheet of paper.
Dana Alvera.
Oh, Alvera. Sonia Alvera. And she's, she is the only one that has applied. She represents the hotel industry, and we, and that, we have that position open on the Tourism Advisory Board, and would recommend that she be appointed to the Tourism Advisory Board. That's really our only choice on this particular one.
You making that form of a motion?
It is a form of a motion from our committee that we appoint Ms. Alvera to the Tourism Advisory Board.
Darren, a second?
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Next item we have is recreation, I guess. Are you gonna do that, or who's gonna?
Uh, Main Street. We have one Main Street thing.
Okay.
On here too.
So it's two different appointments, I can tell you.
Yeah. The other appointment is, we have a opening, Mr. Tyree Slappy has resigned from the Main Street Board. We have a, we have an application in from a, from Darren Carpenter, who is the owner of Scott's Flowers, who is pretty well-known around here, I think, from everybody. He is a solid businessperson. He's been a very strong advocate for the Main Street program and downtown in general, and we would recommend that he be appointed to fill the unexpired term of Tyree Slappy.
Is that a form of a motion?
I would make that motion to replace Mr. Slappy with.
And that's.
To fulfill the unexpired term.
Thank you.
Out of a motion, here's, second, okay? Further discussion? If you'd vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. I'm sorry, were there, was there another one, or was that just those two?
No, that's, that's it, sir.
I'm sorry, Gerald, I didn't follow up like I should have.
Not a problem.
Next item is consider approval of expenditure of funds for repairs at Splashville.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it has been brought to my attention that there are some significant repairs that need to be done to Splashville. Apparently, a plaster job that was done a couple of years ago was not done properly, and we have some severe issues with the pool and the lazy river itself. There are also some plumbing issues. This is approximately $250,000 worth of expenditures that we are proposing. It's 255-77-38. The, all of the vendors involved are on buy board. One vendor is for the plaster, which is, and plaster and tile, which is 225-16-41. The lazy river pump and plumbing is about $19,000. And Rick, you and I did not discuss the spray pad. Can you kind of inform, you, you're much more attuned to, to what's going on and how we've gotten to this point.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, this is Rick Price, our Parks Superintendent.
Okay. So we sent out to two different vendors, two well-known vendors in the pool industry. One was Sunbelt, and one was Progressive. Both responded, and like Mr. Barnes said, both of them gave back quotes that are on buy board. We found during the, during the quote session on this, that in some instances, one gave better quotes than the other. And we had gone with them, and we had combined the lazy river and the pool together for the quote, but there were other things. There was the, the plumbing for the sun pump, or, I'm sorry, the lazy river pump located on the south side of the pool. And there was also the splash pad. The splash pad on this, both gave quotes. One was 36-990, and the other was 18-204. It was my understanding that Mrs. Wotipka had included all these into the original total amount for the repairs. The pools are not the only problem. There's problems with our decks. The weather stripping that's between the cracks is deteriorating, and it's what's happening, is water's getting in there, moisture's getting in there. And when we have very cold weather, we now have expansion, and we end up having cracks and things happen to our, our pool deck. So in the totals for the pool and the lazy river amounts, we've included up to 1,000 feet of crack repair for those pools.
Is that included in the total that you gave us, Alan?
I believe it is, sir.
That is, is all total?
Yes, sir.
One last question, only question I have is, you mentioned earlier that the problem was that part of the plaster or whatever wasn't done correctly last time. How are we gonna make sure it's done correctly this time?
If I not have been done it correctly, Doug, it was, last time it was a patch job. So we did not re-plaster the entire pool last time we did this.
Okay.
That was, that was a partial repair. This is to re-plaster the entire surface of the pool.
All right, thanks, Darren.
Will this be a warranted procedure?
Yes, sir, there will be one.
Other questions?
Who did it last time?
I don't remember.
I think they, I don't know.
Not part of this bid, though?
I'm not sure.
Not part of this bid?
No, sir, no. They, we, we had some difficulty. I don't, I don't remember if they went out of business shortly after the repair. I just remember there was some big convoluted difficulty to get them back.
Darren, you want to have some comments?
No, I mean, I've been out and looked at the pool several times with Kelly, and, I mean, this is, we, we kind of only have two options at this point, and it's either to do these repairs and get the pool back up and going, or, we probably wouldn't be able to open the pool this summer just because of how extensive some of the problems are with the pool and stuff right now. So the water's getting down underneath these pockets, and it's just gonna continue to eat away at that pool finish. So it's only gonna get worse, and, I mean, I think we have, we built it, and we own it, so I think we have a duty to repair it and maintain it.
Anybody else have any questions?
I would just, I'm curious as to why this is suddenly an emergency with emergency funding on a problem that was known. I understand there weren't bids quite ready until budget was almost finished, but we knew there was a problem, we knew it was gonna be expensive. Why didn't we earmark something in the budget so that we don't come into this with a, if you don't do it now, you're not gonna have a pool this summer, and back everybody into a corner?
I was unaware of the, the problem during the budget proceedings. When I found out about it was probably a month or six weeks ago.
I think that's probably the biggest problem I have. It's, it's a quarter of a million dollars on a problem that I have a pool that didn't start overnight.
Correct.
And, and the lack of oversight, and Splashville's a good, I mean, the lack of oversight that we've had over there is extremely disappointing, and it's been extremely costly for something that doesn't need money anyway, to then have to come out of pocket $255,000 to even open. It's ridiculous. I understand the two options. You can't, you can't have spent millions of dollars to have Splashville and not open it, but to have to come because of lack of maintenance and lack of taking care of, come spending $255,000 in an emergency is, is crazy.
Well, and I think, I think to my point, we got bids, beyond budget, we got bids at the end of the budget, which means we've had bids for four months, and we're just now seeing it.
It's not entirely true, sir. We did have conversations about this during our budget process. We didn't know the extent of what the issue was. We began getting bids back during that time, but they've been working on them for the last several months, trying to finalize them and get people out here and different companies and those sort of things. So it wasn't completely unknown. It was, we didn't know what the scope of the entire problem was, and Rick and his crew have been trying to get their finger on that, working with these companies. But we did begin these discussions last summer, late last summer.
Anybody else?
What, what are the general overall conditions of the other pumps, filters, operating equipment? The overall condition of the facility itself?
They've worked the last few years and been making some improvements there in different places. We repainted a bunch of stuff last year. They've replaced pumps and different things as, as they wear out and need to be replaced. I think this one, Mr. Huck, could be kind of hit it on the head, it's just a, it's a lack of maintenance over the years, and when it was first noticed, we tried kind of a, a discount attempt at fixing it, and now we're paying for that.
We put a Band-Aid on, on a severe wound.
Yes.
This is a significant amount of money.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not, I'm, I'm in favor of spending it because I feel like that's a facility that we need to have open, but we certainly need to be more mindful of, of the maintenance and care in the future so that, you know, we can keep up with it at a little, a little easier pace and a little more affordable pace, perhaps.
No, I absolutely agree. I think we probably need to fine tune our annual maintenance plan for that facility to ensure that we don't, we don't end up here again.
Right, and I, that's why I ask you, I know we've been doing maintenance on it and trying to keep up, which we need to do with everything. This is not an exception to that, but we need to, we maybe need to focus a little more on having a maintenance schedule or something that we try to adhere to, to keep, keep it a little closer within budget, and, and then be able to budget for it also.
Yes, sir.
And maybe our rates, and how we're even running this thing. Because if it doesn't pay for itself, it doesn't pay for itself every year, anyway.
No.
It operates at a loss as is, and then to come spend $250,000 on it to even open it, so we can lose money this summer on it.
The unfortunate thing is we don't have debt service on it yet, right?
That's true.
The debt's been paid off. That's one good thing.
I will defend Kelly on this. I think Kelly has got better practices in mind to keep this up. I think she.
Well, this clearly wasn't, this clearly didn't happen overnight. No.
Yeah, I don't think.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not attacking anybody, too. Clearly didn't happen overnight.
Well, and I just want to make sure and defend her. So, I mean, I, I know that she's got in mind the right course of action to keep this thing up and going, and I think she's a little, it's hard to know what to do, because when you go out there and look at this, I mean, you're missing tiles all over the pool, and that stuff didn't happen in the last year that she's been here. You're missing tiles, you've got cracks, you've just got so much general maintenance that hasn't happened, and so for her to get that stuff back on course, I really think she's, she's making strides to get these things back, and it's just unfortunate that it, it's gonna come to the $250,000 price tag to get this back. I think from here, we can really fine tune how we do this in the future, and how we maintain these things, and I think we'll be in a much better place.
Other discussion? Darren, your motion?
I may approve the expenditures as presented, in the presented amount for the repairs at Splashville.
Second.
Second.
A motion is second, any more discussion? If you'd vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. That's the last agenda item. Stacy, is there anything else that I'm missing? Okay, it's the last agenda item, so we're gonna stand adjourned at 7:18. Thank y'all for coming.